All right, folks, welcome to the Missoula City Council meeting for the 7th of April. And I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order at 6:01 PM. Before we get started with our agenda, if you'll join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Okay, thank you very much. So Ms. Trimble, we'll go ahead and do a roll call when you're ready.
All right. Anderson? Absent. Becerra?
Present.
Campbell?
Here.
Arlino?
Present.
Farmer?
Present.
Jones?
Present.
Jordan?
Councilor Jordan will be here, but will be late. I'll let you know when she arrives.
Thank you. Nelson?
Present.
Nugent?
Present.
Savage?
Present.
Cheryl?
Present.
And Lusika?
Present.
All right, we do have a form.
Wonderful, thank you very much. We do have minutes from March 24th. Do we have any council questions or changes to the minutes? All right, not seeing any. Then those will remain as submitted, thank you. Item number three is our committee meeting agenda. We check in to see if there's been any changes to our committee schedule or any committee membership approvals. And Ms. Trimble, do we have any changes to the posted committee schedule?
No, the committee schedule will go forward as written.
Okay, great, thank you. Looks like we might have some new members from the community since our agenda change more than a year ago. So I just want to mention that we don't walk through the committee schedule like we used to, but it's all available online, so the city council agenda page on, uh, online. If you scroll down and you find the calendar, you can find all of the public meetings. If you click on it, then you can get to the agenda and then any associated agenda item with that. So for Wednesday, April 9th, all of those committees, you can easily find the information there. Committees look to be scheduled starting at nine in the morning on Wednesday through the afternoon. So it's gonna be a big committee day for y'all. All right. Thank you. So next is special presentations and proclamations. And this is an opportunity for us to not only read proclamations, but we also hear from folks if there's any special presentations and our neighborhood councils. And we do have a neighborhood council update from the heart of Missoula this evening. So do we have somebody here from that neighborhood council wishing to give her? She's on her way in? All right. Not a worry, not a worry. In fact, we can give a little bit of time and I'll go ahead and read the proclamations first. Okay, all right, no problem. So I'm gonna go ahead and shift to the proclamations this evening. We do have three. So I'll go ahead and start with the first one. And Claire Trimble will put this on the screen too for folks to follow along if that's easier. All right. So the first one is for Landscape Architecture Month. Whereas landscape architecture encompasses the analysis, design, planning, management, and stewardship of the natural and built environment. And whereas landscape architects are committed to addressing justice for all communities through landscape architecture. And whereas landscape architects believe that policymakers at all levels of government can and should seek to eradicate the inequities that harm underserved communities, including communities of color, low-income populations, and tribal and indigenous communities across the country. And whereas landscape architects believe that landscape architecture can and should be employed to eradicate the inequities that harm underserved communities across the country. That might have been a duplicate "and." Whereas Missoula's economy benefits from licensed landscape architects through the creation of inviting and safe spaces for the public, residents, and tourists alike, while simultaneously protecting the environment and associated ecological systems. Now therefore I, Andrea Davis, Mayor of the City of Missoula in the state of Montana, hereby recognize the month of April as Landscape Architecture Month. Is anybody here in the audience or online that's wishing to speak to this proclamation this evening? Okay. Not seeing anybody? All righty. Our next proclamation then is Food Waste Prevention Week. Whereas... Oops, wrong one. There we go. All right. Whereas up to 35% of all food produced is wasted, even though much of it is safe and nutritious and could help feed those in need. And whereas everyone benefits from better utilizing food resources, which creates stronger and more sustainable communities. And whereas a family of four can save between $1,866 and $3,000 per year by reducing wasted food. That comes from the Penn State 2020 re-fed to 2023 report. And whereas we have an opportunity to conserve shared resources, such as land, water, and energy that are used to produce and transport food that ultimately goes uneaten. And whereas food in landfills decomposes slowly, releasing methane gas, a potent contributor to climate change. Now therefore I, Andrea Davis, Mayor of the City of Missoula in the state of Montana, hereby recognize April 7th through the 13th, 2025, as Food Waste Prevention Week. And I encourage all residents to commit to reducing food waste in their homes, workplaces, and communities. All right. And last but not least, we have a proclamation in celebration and recognition of Arbor Day. Whereas Arbor Day is a special day observed throughout the nation and around the world since 1874 for the planting of trees. And whereas Missoula has been a Tree City USA recipient for 37 years, and our city is blessed with beautifully treed mountain sides, tree-lined rivers, and canopy-covered yards, giving us pleasurable places for living, working, and playing. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, intercept stormwater, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore I, Andrea Davis, Mayor of the City of Missoula in the state of Montana, do hereby proclaim April 12th, 2025, as Arbor Day in Missoula, Montana. And I urge all citizens to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, to support our city's urban forestry program, and to plant trees to gladden the hearts and promote the well-being of present and future generations. All right. I didn't ask from the last proclamation when I spoke to the Food Waste Prevention Week, if we actually have anybody here to, to speak to that. Sorry about, sorry about that. Anybody wishing to speak to that? Or is anybody wishing to say anything about Arbor Day? Okay. Thank you very much for listening, appreciate that. All right, that wraps up our proclamations. We'll go back to our Neighborhood Council report. So we're looking forward to hearing from the Heart of Missoula leadership team. Whenever you're ready, come on up to the microphone. We'll turn the microphone on. And if you'll just say your name for the record, please, that would be great.
Hello, I'm Chris Kennedy, a resident of Ward 1.
And I'm T-Bone Pleasant, and I'm also a resident of Ward 1. I live, you know, in the downtown area.
Yeah, we're very glad to have a Neighborhood Council again. There was a two-year hiatus where the Heart of Missoula, one of the most important neighborhoods in town, one that encompasses the city from River Road to May Street and between the river and the railroad tracks, really does need representation as far as our neighborhoods go. So we're very glad to be functioning again. And we're also glad that Mr. Carlini proposed and the council supported the resolution to increase funding for neighborhood projects. And in fact, we plan to apply for an Energizer grant. We are still deciding what beautification project seems most appropriate.
Other than that, we're also in the process right now of putting together, you know, we've called it a, like a general meeting. Basically, it's a general meeting where we're gonna do our business, but we also wanna have it be where it's open to the public here in Missoula, so we can have a lot of people come. And some of it is, I believe, to have a kind of recruitment for the people downtown. You know, most people downtown are, uh, it's, there's either businesses down here or there's renters, but there's still residents down here, you know, there's businesses. You know, it is the very heart of, of Missoula. You know, I happen to live right across from what was once, well, still registered as the original township of Missoula. It's that part of town, so it's where this town began.
And that meeting is tentatively scheduled for June in Kiwanis Park. And there will be food and raffles right here. So I hope the council can support this new birth of the Heart of Missoula Neighborhood Council. Thank you.
Well, thank you both very much, and thank you for your participation with local government by being part of your Neighborhood Council. Any comments or questions for the representatives that are here tonight? All right. No grilling yet tonight. I appreciate it very much. Thank you so much. All right. So that does wrap up our special presentations and proclamations this evening. And we do have three public hearings this evening. So we'll hear each of these. The state law and the city council rules set guidelines for inviting community comment in a formal way on certain issues. And following a staff report on each of these public hearings, the city council and I will invite members of the public up to share community comment. City council holds a public hearing on the item. A member of council makes a motion and a vote is taken. The public hearing and vote take place on the same night unless there is a reason to hold the vote, vote over to a later meeting date. So our first item is item 5.1. That is Remington Flats Phasing Plan Amendment and Phases 4 and 5 Phase Development Review. And we have staff member Lauren Stevens here to present on this tonight.
Thank you, Mayor Davis. Let me get my screen shared here. All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Lauren Stevens. I'm a senior planner with CPDI. And today I'll be presenting staff's report on the Phase Development Review and Phasing Plan Amendment for the Remington Flats subdivision, Phases 4 and 5. The subject property is located directly north of the 44 Ranch subdivision in the Captain John Mullen neighborhood. To the east is the McNett Flats development, and to the west is airport property that is vacant. There is currently a subdivision application under review on the property to the north as well. Phase Development Review is a process mandated by state law and requires city council to hold a public hearing prior to the approval of final plat. In this review, the goal is just to determine if there are any changes to review criteria or any new information which would result in significant impacts that were not known at the time of preliminary plat approval. If these circumstances do exist, city council is able to apply new conditions of approval or amend existing conditions. Uh, council may choose to approve the Phase Development Review with some or all of the recommendations, but Phase Development Review cannot be denied. So the preliminary plat for this subdivision was approved on October 19th, 2020. Since then, state and local law did change so that this process is no longer required for phases platted within five years of preliminary plat approval. However, the subdivision must follow the laws in place at the time it was deemed sufficient for review, so it's still required. Once the Phase Development Review is approved, the applicant may submit for final plat review and approval, which ensures their submittal meets any existing conditions as well as those that may result from this Phase Development Review process. The city's subdivision regulations include review of the following impacts from any proposed subdivision. These are the categories you will find within the staff report and are the same categories previously addressed with approval of the preliminary plat. There is some new and changed information for subdivision Phases 4 and 5, but these updates do not generate additional impacts to these review criteria. New information that has been added as findings of fact in the staff report address the new land use plan adopted by city council in December and the Setupkin Master Plan, which was adopted after the subdivision received preliminary plat approval. The staff report discusses the new place type designation of urban mixed-use low for the subject property, which the approved subdivision works well with. This place type supports urban residential neighborhoods with a diversity of housing types and building sizes. This development primarily consists of attached townhouse units, which create a transition from the single detached houses to the south to the larger-scale multi-dwelling buildings to the east. The other item of new information includes a phasing plan amendment request from the applicant to swap the Phases 5 and 6 on the current phasing plan. This requested change does not create new impacts to the primary review criteria, and per-agency comments is actually a more ideal order of operations from an infrastructure standpoint. Staff have not received any public comment on this project to date, but did receive an additional agency comment after issuance of the staff report. The comment from the Missoula Airport included reminders about required documentation for the development, such as an navigation easement, which has already been completed. Here is the current phasing plan approved with the preliminary plat. On this plan, Phases 4 and 5 are adjacent to each other and include two new street segments, very much like Phases 2 and 3, which were filed in 2023. The current Phase 6 is located to the north in light blue and includes an extension of Winchester Drive running east-west. And here's the proposed phasing plan, just switching Phases 5 and 6 around. The proposed plan keeps the same 2034 deadline for the filing of Phase 7, but updates Phase 5 to 2028 to match Phase 4 and changes the Phase 6 deadline to 2030. This slide shows Phase 4 and proposed Phases 5 and 6 in context with the general area. As you can see, the new phasing order will be a large improvement in terms of connectivity by establishing the connection of Winchester Drive to the McNett Flats development, as well as providing another access point for the internal subdivision roads like Tenderfoot Way and Riada Road. This improves fire and emergency access to these homes as well. Without swapping the phases, there would be four dead-end streets until the final two phases of the subdivision are constructed. Additionally, the property to the north is currently working through the subdivision process, and having these roads built now rather than later will also benefit Paisley Park with connectivity to the larger neighborhood. There are additional cost benefits for the applicant to pair the phases in this order. And this is also a preferred layout for water infrastructure connectivity. Phase Development Review has a 30-day review deadline, with the deadline for this review landing on April 11. Staff are recommending approval of the Phasing Plan Amendment and Phase Development Review based on the facts and conclusions within the staff report.
Thank you very much, Lauren. Do you know if there's a member of the development team that's interested in being part of the presentation this evening? Yes? Okay, great. So for the record, we heard that a member of the developers' represent, representative is here for questions from council. So we'll go ahead and we will turn it over to council for those questions. Any council questions this evening? Okay. Not seeing any. Then we'll go ahead and we will open up the public hearing. So I will request Councilor Nugent to go ahead and read the motion and we'll open up the public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor Davis. I move city council approve the Phasing Plan Amendment and Phase Development Review of Remington Flats subdivision Phases 4 and 5, located northeast of the intersection of Chuck Wagon Drive and Remington Drive, based on the findings of fact and conclusions of law on the staff.
Okay, thank you very much, Councilor Nugent. That opens the public hearing. If there are members of the public that wish to provide comment, come on up to the podium. Please say your name for the record. Public comments, we allow for three minutes per person. And I have a handy-dandy timer here to help you track your time there. So any public comment from members in the room tonight? I'm not seeing anybody, not on this item, okay? How about online? Are there any members of the public online wishing to make comment on this agenda item? Okay. Give it another second here. All right. Not seeing any public comment then. That wraps up our public hearing. We'll bring it back to council to see if any council members have any further questions or comments. Councilor Cheryl?
I don't have any further questions or comments. I just, since we do have a lot of public here tonight, we, we saw this on Wednesday, Wednesday ago, and so we were able to ask our questions at that point. I think that's important for the public to know.
Thanks for adding that additional context, yeah. That is hopeful. All right, looks like you had all your questions answered at that time. And staff and the developer worked on putting together a comprehensive presentation. So we will wrap up then the parliamentary debate, and we will go ahead and ask for a roll call vote. Ms. Trimble?
All right, voting on the Remington Flats Phasing Plan Development and Phases 4 and 5 Phase Development Review, beginning with Becerra.
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Arlino?
Yes.
Farmer?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Nugent?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
And Lusika?
Yes.
Not passes with ten in favor, none opposed.
Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Trimble, and thank you for the presentation tonight, Stevens and Mr. Throckmorton. And I do believe that wraps up this agenda item then. Thank you. Our next public hearing is item 5.2, which is to rezone of California Street and River Road. And we have Tara Porcari here on staff to present this item. And so I'll turn it over to Tara when you're ready.
Okay, awesome. Thanks, Mayor. Hi there, Tara Porcari with City Development Services. I'm a planner. As mentioned, I'm gonna be going over a rezone at California Street and River Road. I-Meg is representing the owners of Riley Enterprises in this request to rezone the property from R-80 Residential, RT-10 Residential, and B-2-2 Community Business with a small south side riverfront neighborhood character overlay, to B-2-3 Community Business for the entire parcel with no overlays. As a reminder to everyone, rezonings don't include conditions of approval. So today you'll be recommending approval or denial of the rezoning as submitted. Here's location of the request, just southwest of the intersection of North California Street and River Road, just south the river, kitty corner from the California Street pedestrian bridge and west of Silver Park. All surrounding streets are considered local streets. There's a good mix of multimodal transportation options nearby, as well with Mountain Lines Route 2 running along Russell Street and the U-Dash Purple Line running along Wyoming Street. Additionally, there are some easy trail connections through the riverfront trails through Silver Park and Milwaukee Trail to the south. The site is about five acres and consists of three existing parcels, which are located within City Council Ward 3 and the Riverfront Neighborhood Council area. It currently contains a mix of single-family homes, multifamily buildings, and residential outbuildings, all of which are proposed to be removed with the tentative development plan. It's located within the utility service area, and both city water and sewer are available to the site from Idaho. It is located within Flood Zone 8E, which is the area of 1% chance annual flood hazard. In order to develop this property, it'll require demonstration of full compliance with Title 18 Flood Plane Hazard Management Regulations, which will require the review and approval of a flood plane permit prior to the issuance of any of our building permits. This process is standard. The purpose is to ensure public safety requirements are met and will require any structures to be at least two feet above base flood elevation, among some other requirements. So these same standards would be applicable today with or without the rezone, but it's definitely important. The new land use plan designate the subject property with a place type of urban mixed-use low. If you haven't worked with the new plan too much quite yet, it replaced the previous growth policy, obviously. And the place types are comparable to the previous land use designations, so just a reminder. Similar to before, each place type references some current relatable zoning districts. And for the urban mixed-use low, the plan calls out B-1, B-2, B-3, C-1, and M-1 are as comparable options. The applicant is requesting zoning of B-2-3, so it does align with what's laid out in the land use plan. Additionally, on a high level, the urban mixed-use low place type is intended to provide a mix of residential housing types, interspersed with a mix of commercial and limited industrial residential to provide kind of an urban residential feel, a walkable environment. And those are some of the core concepts we generally kind of want to see in those areas. In addition to the main land use plan, this property is included within the Wyoming Street neighborhood, is outlined in the applicable downtown master plan for the area, so that's still included with the land use plan. Here is a high-level idea of what the plan calls out for the area, similar to the goals of the urban mixed-use low place type. It calls out an emphasis on missile, missing middle housing, diverse housing options, obviously, including ops and opportunities for some mixed-use development and encouraging connections to the river. It also mentions additional opportunity for green space and some sort of riparian buffer or green activity space between any development in the river. This is what the current zoning map looks like. There's still a few small sections of very low-density zoning left over in the area, but we've been seeing a few rezones just south the property to B-2-2 to start aligning better with what was laid out as far as the previous growth policy and now the new land use plan. We also see some existing community business, which is what the applicant is requesting. So that'll be very similar in character, but it just currently has a slightly lower intensity indicator, which coincides with the height allowances. So you'll know that there's currently a neighborhood character overlay on the existing B-2-2 portion of the property. They're requesting removal of this overlay with the proposal. And I do just want to note that it won't make a difference whether or not this exists in this location, since there's language in Title 20, it's section 2025060B3. Just for reference, that says these standards aren't applicable in a flood zone, which applies to this property. So that is the reason it won't be discussed too much in today's presentation. At this location, the overlay basically doesn't apply. So as mentioned, they're requesting B-2-3 Community Business, which is similar to a few other rezones in the area, which have been rezoned to B-2-2 Community Business. And again, the B-2 district as a whole is a comparable zoning district in the new land use plan, so that is complying with what's been adopted. Here is a comparison of the actual standards. Obviously, we'll see a big difference between the R-80 extremely low-density residential zone that exists there and the proposed B-2-3 zoning. We'll also see a pretty large difference with allowable uses and height from the existing RT-10 district on-site. But the B-2-2 existing zoning is exactly the same as the requested B-2-3, except for the maximum height, which is proposed to change from 50 feet up to 65 feet when adding that dash three. Overall, though, the community business district allows uses such as residential development, schools, churches, restaurants, offices, personal improvement services, retail sales, limited industrial, and microbreweries, all fairly low-intensity uses that are possible to mix into kind of that urban residential environment. Additionally, setbacks only apply if a budding residential district, but if they do, they're meant to match. meant to match abutting front and side setbacks and reflect a percentage of the parcel depth if the side and rear setbacks are applicable. In this case, they would currently be imposed on the west side where the parcel still abuts in R-80 District. So here is what the developer is showing that they're proposing for the site. They, this is from their packets, they're showing a four-story, 43-foot multifamily building closest to the river in the northwest corner of the site. That has about a 90-foot buffer of green space between the building and River Road. And then the other closest building would be a five-story building of approximately 53 feet on the northeast corner with about a 60-foot green space buffer between the building and River Road. Then along Idaho Street, they're proposing some potential townhome units on the southwest corner of the site and two potential multifamily and mixed-use buildings as you head towards California Street, all of which are showing a maximum height of 53 feet. A few things to point out on their site plan are some comments from initial scoping meetings with staff. Items we brought up to the applicants during the scoping phase, based on Wyoming Street Neighborhood section of the downtown master plan, are that we wanted to see as much green space or riparian area as possible on the riverside of development. Connectivity to the river was important, and although not incorporated into any of our formal plans, we did mention that we have heard concerns from City Council about additional height right on the river and kind of that idea of canyonizing the river. Their application states that by allowing a little extra height above that of the B-2-2 zoning designation, again, 50 feet to 65 feet, they were able to design the site in such a way to provide for a bit more green space, as well as to allow for some mixed-use space, as was mentioned in the land use plan. In this development proposal, they're showing approximately 235 dwelling units and about 8,500 square feet of commercial space. And then just to make sure everyone understands, there isn't anything binding at this time about these plans, so just keep in mind that we're voting on the rezone itself to B-2-3, but this should give some context, just kind of on the intent of the development team and why they're asking for what they are. So as mentioned, the existing community business zoning designation on the one parcel on the site is B-2-2, which allows up to 50 feet in height, but they are looking for that 65 feet. So the packet provides this drawing to show what the development might look like if they were to request the lower intensity zoning of B-2-2, with the tallest building being four stories and 43 feet. Of course, this is just one scenario, but they're showing this version of the site plan at just 196 units and no commercial space. And that's just kind of for comparison's sake. So the application addresses the need for extra height to enable the property to build up instead of out, creating the potential for more green space along River Road. They say that the 65-feet max building height would allow the landowner to ship building footprints along River Road to the south, roughly 56 to 90 feet, which they have calculated in their packet to add about 0.5 acres of additional open space when compared to the 50-foot max height. Overall, their argument and application outline that the B-2-2 zoning designation would result in the sacrifice of dwelling units or no commercial space to accommodate those units, which is why they are asking for that height to accommodate up to a five-story building. It's also worth noting that the development proposal shows the tallest building maxing out at 53 feet, so while this isn't binding, it would likely just be slightly over the 50 feet allowable for the B-2-2 zone that exists on part of the site today. A note on process, that council won't be deciding between intensity indicators, but rather approving or denying the B-2-3 zoning that's being requested. Additionally, all zoning regulations, building requirements, flood plane permits, and any other outside agency review would be checked at the time of building permit in the same way that it'd be required now prior to any rezoning. So here's kind of a summary of the agency and public comment that we received. Agency comment, generally talking from our utilities folks, that water main extensions will be required for any service at the time of development. A lot of this happens at the time of building permit before development goes in. And then Perks and Rec just commented, future River Road may change since it's a planned route of the riverfront trail and may be redesigned for non-motorized transportation sometime in the future. Also, the downtown master plan recommends increased riparian buffer, and Perk strongly encourages a development plan that respects the importance of the river as a natural resource. So basically what they're saying there, there's no plans as is to switch River Road, and we can't necessarily require that through the rezone application, but it's just something to note that that's, you know, been discussed over the last couple of years. Finally, the neighbors just to the west of the subject parcel commented at Planning Board that they don't have any opposition to the project, but they did want it on the record that they plan on continuing to use River Road for their vehicular access to their lots, that they don't really plan on changing anything anytime soon. So otherwise, we haven't received any other kind of new stand-up comment at this point. Vicky Watson has been the main commenter that we've seen. She's included some additional written comments and context for her concerns that have just been added to City Council packets today. She had some previous ones that are shown on the screen, but just to make sure they were seen by everyone on council, I did email them to your individual accounts this afternoon to make sure you had access to them, but she did let me know she'd also be speaking at tonight's hearing, so I won't kind of go too far into the email she sent to Gwen today. But just to help with some context on policy and city processes, I think I mentioned previously that flood plane permits would be handled at the time of building permit, so no changes would occur for that requirement with the rezone. And then I did just kind of want to mention, too, that we work with the Conservation District also at the time of building permit to determine if a 310 Natural Stream Bed and Land Preservation Act permit is required. To be totally transparent, given the location of River Road between the property and the river, I don't believe we have any additional protections there. But just so everyone kind of sees the process as a whole, that requirement is under the city's direct review. We kind of check that off and work with them. And so none of that would change with the requested proposal, but just a little bit of background on how we handle some of those processes. Okay, so looking at the review criteria for rezones, starting with compliance with the growth policy or land use plan. We talked about this a bit earlier, but B-2 Community Business zoning is a current relatable zoning district under the urban mixed-use low place type in the land use plan. The rezoning also supports many focus inward goals and has the opportunity to include some of the mixed-use elements and diverse housing types discussed in both the downtown master plan for the Wyoming Street area and the designated place type in the main plan. Next, the public health, safety, public services, and transportation component. It facilitates the availability of public services, including transportation options, emergency services, city utilities, schools, and parks. It also is located within close proximity to the trail system and transit routes, and the installation of sidewalks is required at the time of building permit. Of course, there are arguments for additional safety and environmental measures that could be included regarding the flood plain and river, but as staff, our recommendation relies on our flood plane permitting and 310 permit processes. Okay, provision of light and air, compatible urban growth and suitability of uses. All building codes will need to be met, as well as landscaping and activity area requirements, so there's no standing concern for the provision of light and air at this time. Compatible urban growth, as we spoke about, it's in compliance with the land use plan, and we're seeing similar zoning of B-2-2 Community Business already on-site and nearby, which has the same allowable uses as the request. The value of building and appropriate use of land. The rezoning request has considered the location and character of the property, which has obviously some super easy access to urban infrastructure, public services, and downtown amenities. And then finally, it does not correct an error or inconsistency, but it does address the changing condition of a lack of housing in town and, you know, throughout the West. So generally, although arguments exist both ways for elements of the proposal, it is in the best interest of the city since it meets the goals and place type components of the land use plan. Planning Board met on March 18th on this item. They voted to recommend approval of the request, six to zero with one additional member abstaining. If you look at the summary of the board discussion attached to this agenda, it's been on there for a while, you'll see that folks were generally in support of the proposal, but the biggest concerns were for the height of the buildings, protection of the river, and riparian area, and then a few comments about flood plain. So overall, though, it felt like a pretty positive response, but definitely take into account your own review of those, too. Okay, overall, based on compliance with the land use plan and review of the rezoning criteria, staff's recommendation is for the approval of the request. Just a heads up as well that the next agenda item for today's meeting will go over a related development that's proposing annexation just across California Street. So if you've reviewed both projects and they're kind of mixing up in your head, this piece is just for the rezone of the property west of California Street, and we'll get into that annexation request after this item is complete and the vote is over. I saw that our representatives were available, so we've got some folks from IMAG and maybe some folks in the audience as well. But yep, we'll be open for questions, and if they want to speak further, they definitely can. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation, Ms. Porchari. And are there development representatives from IMAG wishing to contribute to the presentation this evening? Either online?
Oh, yes.
Yes, go right ahead.
Can you all hear me?
We sure can.
Okay, great. Thank you, Tara, for the thorough presentation. Good evening, council members, any members of the public attending or listening in. My name is Joe Denert, D-E-H-N-E-R-T with IMAG, and I am here representing the landowner, Mr. Zavarelli, for the proposed rezone request. I'll try to keep my presentation this evening pretty brief. I just want to go over the why behind the proposal, because I think it's pretty important. The simple answer is that rezoning requests take a significant amount of time. Up to this point, I think the process began over two years ago, and we had multiple meetings with the city to determine the best path forward in terms of, excuse me, existing policy compliance. Additionally, the rezone application actually had to be updated after passing the first completeness review because of the newly adopted land use plan, which changed the designation for this area from residential median to urban, medium to urban mixed-use low. A bit more long-form answer to the why question is, it's really rooted in the history between the landowner and the city here, mainly because the landowner has expressed the desire and the need for higher-density housing capabilities on their property for the better part of a decade. It really took the formal adoption of the downtown master plan and the inclusion of the property into the larger Wyoming Street Neighborhood in 2019 to get the policy, at least, on board in some sense with the landowner's vision of higher density. Then with the passing of the new land use plan, that vision really became further cemented as this area slotted within the urban mixed-use place type. The proposed site plan included in our application came about from multiple back-and-forth with the city to ensure compliance with applicable plans and finally gives the policy credence via the formal recommendations to bring the landowner's vision to life. This is a really unique property in terms of its infill capabilities, in terms of its connectivity to Missoula's downtown. And as mentioned, the policy and plan recommendations are really, they're finally in place to realize the highest and best use on the property. We believe that the site plan recommendations provided herein not only showcase compliance with the plans for this area, but do a good job of giving a sense of what the landowner envisions on this parcel. As Tara mentioned, we had a really quality discussion at Planning Board. There were a number of comments, and she alluded to some of those, where, but members agreed that the plans for increased housing density and connectivity were a good fit, and it resulted in unanimous approval. One board member specifically brought up the point of development in the flood plain, and that was also the key point in the only public comment we received for the project. So I do want to touch on that briefly, even though Tara alluded to that in her presentation. Firstly, I want to thank Vicky Watson for the comment they provided, and start by saying that I agree that any development occurring in any portion of the flood plain, it has to be carefully planned to ensure that public health and safety and the safety of, I think as they put it, one of our most treasured resources are not afterthoughts. Fortunately for the city of Missoula as a whole, and for us, city staff does a good job at making sure that development complies with Title 18, which is the city's flood plane regulations. And this project would have to do so as well. It's stated in the staff report, but essentially, any development on-site would mandate that the structures be built at least two feet above the base flood elevation, BFEs, and require drainage paths to be maintained, among other requirements. These requirements are in place to ensure that public health and safety and the safety of the resource are factored into any development occurring in the flood plain. And these are also the regulations that city staff and the public know that they have to rely on and that they would rely on when designating these properties for mixed-use development in both the new land use plan and the downtown master plan. I want to be clear that the team behind this proposal went above and beyond any required setbacks along the property's northern boundary for the proposed site plans. This was actually one of the primary reasons behind requesting the B-2-3 zoning, because the ability to have buildings slightly over 50-foot in height creates the potential for much more space away from River Road and the Clark Fork. Another reason for the increased building height being requested with B-2-3 is because in function, the plan for this site is to have the buildings be similar to the Mill District, the difference being that parking has to happen on the ground level here instead of being underground because of the flood plain. Honestly, our hope is that in the future, development on this site can serve as a showcase for the balance that landowners can strike in terms of providing housing without sacrificing natural resources that the public enjoys. By proposing the tallest buildings further away from the river, by providing increased open space along River Road, and still showcasing a development that could bring over 235 dwelling units as well as commercial space into the community, we believe the proposal before you strikes that balance and does a good job at communicating why the requested B-2-3 zoning is fitting, not only because it aligns with the applicable plans and policies, but also doesn't sacrifice the potential for resource protection in the future. There's a lot of context with this property, and a lot of time and effort has gone into the proposal that you see here this evening. Mike Morgan with Hoffman, Morgan &amp; Associates, part of our team, did a really good job at showcasing more of the why behind the design and the site plan and how that was driven by the guidance given in the renderings and descriptions in both the land use plan and the downtown master plan. So I won't touch on that here this evening, but Mike, along with myself and the landowner, are available to answer any questions you may have. Thank you very much for your time, and I will stop there.
Thank you for your presentation this evening, Mr. Denert. Are there any members of the team in the room that wish to present before we move on to the motion and the public hearing? Okay. All right, thank you for the thorough presentation. We'll go ahead, and before hearing that main motion, we'll open it up to questions from council members. And I see Counselor Campbell, you have your hand raised, please. Oh, and I'm sorry, for the record, Ms. Trimble, will you please note for the record that, unless you have already, that Counselor Jordan has arrived. About 6:23 PM is when she joined the meeting virtually. Thank you.
Got it, thank you.
You bet. All right. All right, Counselor Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor Mayor. So my first concern, I had brought this up in committee last week I put off for this public hearing to bring it about. I still have that concern with that irrigation ditch allowance outside of property. I know that's technically outside the boundary of this project, but has there been any outreach to whomever owns this ditch in terms of any sort of mitigation might have to be done in the future for any development that takes place? I understand we're just dealing with the rezon here today, but it just seems to me in this particular issue, just like with the floodplain, right, is something I think we need to get ahead of, you know, going into this at this stage. So I just wonder if that was ever addressed by staff or client representative?
Great, thank you for your question. Who would like to take that? Ms. Pocari, would you like to start or who would like to answer that question?
Yeah, I was actually going to pass it over to the applicant. I believe they had kind of started speaking on that at LUP, but I think tonight is the best time to discuss it. So I'll let them go a little bit further.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tara, and thank you, Councilmember Campbell. As discussed at LUP, you know, it is beyond the blinder, so to speak, of the rezon application. Fortunately, similar to the floodplain issue, any development that could impact that ditch, any impact to downstream users of that ditch has to go through the appropriate district and be reviewed at that time. So, you know, I can't really provide much more context beyond that just for the nature of the rezon because it's a far, a bit too many steps ahead. You know, as Tara mentioned, the proposed site plan that you see before you is to give a sense of the development potential with the requested rezon, but it is by no means exactly, you know, what is going to be built and the plans aren't drummed up with product types and all of the permits in place yet. So that will be hashed out prior to developing on site to make sure there's no negative impacts to the ditch and the district is involved in that.
Okay, follow up for me?
Certainly.
Thank you. Yeah, I appreciate that answer. I just know these ditches could be inherently dangerous and it doesn't matter what part of town they're in. And I know we can't go in there and rip them all out or put them all underground to culvert. I get that, but it's just a concern of mine going forward, you know, considering particularly the number of units that we're looking at on that piece of property. There are questions I had, just generally speaking, going forward, should this zone change be approved? Obviously, at some point, development may come through in a formal proposal. With the zoning, with it being a compliant proposal, what would the steps then be for a development application to CDPI? Would that necessitate other public hearings or involvement by Planning Board of this body?
I can take that. Generally, there would not be additional public hearings or anything like that unless they were requesting, you know, some sort of variance or other land use proposal that would necessitate that. If everything within their proposal complies with the zoning, then they're able to just submit for building permits and at that point will not only review all of the zoning requirements or other departments, we'll look at all of the, you know, building regulations, things like that, and then we'll double check any outside agency review that needs to be done at that point.
Thank you for that, thank you.
You're welcome, you bet. Counselor Jones?
Thanks, I had a few questions. First of all, I appreciate all of the comments and discussion regarding the floodplain and public comment from Ms. Watson. I think it gave everybody a lot of focus points to think about as we're working through this process. Just so that I have it clear in my mind, with this proposed rezon, first of all, it's, any projects that's being proposed right now is just hypothetical. We're just looking at a rezon right now, but with this proposed rezon, it opens up the door to options to build more densely but be further back from the river. Am I correct in that? That's part of the strategy of this?
When you say build more densely, yes and no. Since there's a portion of the site that is already a B2 zone, that portion would remain the same as far as allowable density, it would just go up in allowed height. So their capacity to use that density in a way that would build up versus out may change a little bit. As far as the rest of the site, which is zoned kind of the lower density, then yes, that density would go up as part of this rezon.
Okay, and it's, understanding that the applicant is not tied to these proposed drawings that they're putting out, but there would be a bigger setback from the river that is allowed if the rezon goes through. As a potential.
Sorry, can you restate that? You're saying there would be a larger setback with the rezon?
Well, from looking at the different proposals that were put in front of us, one of the takeaways is with the, if this is rezoned, then by rearranging the deck chairs in a different configuration based on the rezon, there can be a bigger buffer between the buildings and the river.
That is what they're saying based on the design from the applicant. Yep, not, that wouldn't be a requirement, but based on the proposal that they've put forward, kind of as an example, that is true, yes.
Correct, okay, I just want to make sure that that was clear in my mind. And if I've got a couple more, if that's all right.
That's fine, Mayor Davis.
Okay. This is looking way down the road and again, it's hypothetical because sometimes projects don't even get built, but River Road has no sidewalks, it's a very rudimentary road. If this goes in, there's kind of this fork in the road, so to speak. Either River Road is addressed or there is a change and it's no longer a road, it's more of a bike, ped path. I don't know when that will happen or where the money will ever come from or how it will happen, but at a minimum, would construction trigger sidewalks on River Road? If that's something you're able to answer today?
I can't personally, I don't know. I think I did see that Troy's here and I believe Nathan might be here from Parks. We might have an engineering and Parks representative. From what I've heard in the previous conversations, we really can't say right now since we don't know what those plans are. In general, that would be the case with any other development in a roadway that we knew was going to, you know, remain the same. But does anyone else have anything else they want to add to that? I know it's just kind of been up in the air in the past when we've discussed it.
Thank you, Ms. Pocari. I'm looking down the participant list is, is there anybody from Development Services representing engineering that could speak on this tonight? This question. Troy, oh, there you are. Mr. Monroe, I see your hand is raised. Please join us.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
City engineer. Yeah, so in a normal situation, yes, River Road would have additional full, complete streets placed upon it at the time of development, adjacent to the development. California Street definitely will. We would have to discuss more with our long-term transportation planners and everyone else about will River Road be shifting in the future to where we didn't, wouldn't want to put that infrastructure in at this time? But if that was the case, then yes, development would be required to put in the complete streets along River Road frontage. However, they could also, this development can access all of the pedestrian necessities from California Street and Idaho Streets. So there is a possibility that we would postpone those improvements on River Road until that time that River Road is reconstructed.
Thanks, and just one more, thank you, Troy. That I think is just nice knowing what potentially would happen down the road with the River Road because it's clearly needs some attention. And then just my last question is for Ms. Pocari. Just, we had discussed briefly in committee, if there was any update or information from Parks and any other agencies regarding land use map implementation where one of the first year goals was mapping the sensitive riparian areas of rivers going through Missoula? And is there any update on that? Otherwise, I will reach out to Parks. But I don't think it is going to impact this project necessarily, but it's an issue of concern for the community.
Yep, no update at this point. And I believe that the Parks representative wasn't able to make it tonight, so I don't think we have somebody else to comment on it, but no update at this point.
Thank you. Absolutely, thank you for your three-year questions, Counselor Jones, and we'll move on to Counselor Nugent.
Thank you, Mayor Davis. Not so much a question, but I want to clarify, follow up a little bit on what Ms. Jones was talking about and just the conversation around the master plan that showed all kinds of green space and some of that green space is on private property and River Road on this side of Russell, I think dead ends. And the properties beyond this parcel of rezoning are single-family homes with driveways onto River Road. So I just want to make sure that we're setting the expectation for the community that there's no imminent redoing of River Road before we solve the access to those parcels for the property owners. So I just want to make sure that anybody listening and, you know, eating their popcorn and watching the city council on Monday night instead of the basketball championship game might just make sure they know that.
Thanks for that clarification, I appreciate that, Counselor Nugent. Counselor Vasika, go right ahead.
Thanks, Counselor Nugent basically did what I was going to do. I really appreciate Counselor Jones's concern about River Road, but I bike and walk this area of River Road a lot to get to the river. And east of Russell isn't really the concern of sidewalks. It's mainly the area that's west of Russell Street and River Road that is the concern of sidewalks. So I don't think that that would be a big issue, but who knows for the future, but I just wanted to clarify as well, thank you.
Absolutely, you bet. Thanks for adding that clarification. And Counselor Becerra?
I think my question got answered, so I'll lower my hand.
Okay, excellent. Any other further questions from council members before we move on to hear the motion? Okay, I'm not seeing any additional questions then. That wraps up our questions from council and we'll go ahead and move on to hearing the motions so we can have the public hearing. And so Counselor Nugent, if you will read the motion for the floor, please.
Thank you, Mayor Davis. I move city council adopt an ordinance rezoning the subject property located southwest of the intersection of California Street and River Road legally described in Exhibit A from R80 residential B2-2 community business and RT10 residential two-unit townhome with a southside riverfront neighborhood character overlay to B2-3 community business with no overlay based on the findings of fact in this staff report.
Okay, thank you very much. And this opens up the public hearing and public comment. So anybody interested in making public comment on this agenda item, come on up to the microphone now. Come on up.
Mayor Davis and council members, my name's Vicky Watson and for over 40 years, I've been studying the Clark Fork River and working with my fellow citizens for its conservation and restoration. And I want to thank you for your hard work to address Missoula's many challenges of rapid growth and increasingly chaotic national policy theme. And I realize that trade-offs sometimes have to be made, but I want to remind you that one of Missoula's greatest treasures is our river. It recharges our sole source drinking water aquifer, supports our recreation industry and restores the souls of our citizens we owe it the best possible care. It was badly treated for short-term gains in the past and once ran blood red with mining waste during a big flood. And it has been green with nuisance algae and filled with dead fish from low oxygen events caused by poor management of sewage and pulp mill waste. Thankfully, Missoula and Montana stepped up to address those problems and the river has been recovering, but it continues to face an old problem and that is building in its floodplain. Protection of a river's floodplain from development is one of the most essential protections for a river, especially that now that we expect increasingly severe floods brought on by climate change. During the downtown master development process, many of us brought up that Missoula must avoid new or more dense development in the floodplain. It's not doing anyone a favor to house them in an area with a growing risk of flooding. And when we reduce the flood risk in one part of the floodplain by filling it in or building dykes and levees, we send bigger floods to the people downstream. That send the people, that send the problem downstream mentality is why the Clark Fork is lined with superfund sites. Missoula rejected that mentality and paid for a state-of-the-art wastewater treatment plant to protect the downstream Clark Fork and Lake Ponderay all the way in Idaho. Let's not throw away that effort by lining the river with tall buildings and no buffer zone to protect the river. I was told that this zoning change does not increase the river's risk because the current zoning already allows development right by the river. The zoning change only allows a little more density and that the riparian rules will provide protection once the actual specific development planning occurs. But when I looked at the rules, I found no required setbacks or buffers, just some vague statements about protecting riparian areas and those were not very well defined. And even stated that if the financial hardship was too great, even those vague modest protections can be set aside. So I guess I feel like our riparian protection rules need some improving. And I appeal to the council and its staff and the landowner, who does seem to be concerned about this, to work together to provide some real protection for the river. Grand Creek is getting, supposedly getting a 200-foot wide floodplain and another 100-foot of buffers on either side of that, unless those claims are also wishful thinking. So the Clark Fork needs and deserves some real meaningful setbacks and buffers and functional riparian areas within those setbacks. Please put the tallest buildings as far from the river as possible, not close to the river. It sounds, I may have misunderstood the diagrams. It looked to me like the tallest buildings were near the river. I heard tonight that the plan is that they would be far from the river. Well, that's, I'd just like to emphasize that, please put the tallest buildings as far from the river as possible. In addition to respecting the river's health, we need to respect the thousands of people who walk or bike the river trails or float down the river. They don't want to be in a concrete canyon.
Thank you, Ms. Watson, we're well past our three minutes. Appreciate it. Thank you, and the councilman, and I also received your comments and emails today. Thank you. Appreciate that. Any other members of the public wishing to make comment this evening?
Good evening, my name is Jeff Stevens. I live at 123 Saranac Drive. I'd just like to express my enthusiastic support for this proposed rezoning and redevelopment proposal. This is an area that's long needed improvement and infill and I think this would be really important to the community and the neighborhood in general. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Anybody else wishing to make public comment on this agenda item this evening? Not seeing any in the room? How about online? Are there members of the public wishing to make comment on this agenda item? Okay, not seeing any online either. Thank you very much to folks and members of the public that came to speak this evening. We'll go ahead and conclude our public hearing and we'll bring it back to city council for parliamentary debate, see if there's any further questions or comments from council tonight. Counselor Carlino, right ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to speak a little bit to this proposal. I do think that, you know, we as a council and city staff should work on updating our floodplain and other regulations to, or other regulations to protect the river and the riparian areas next to it. You know, looking at the diagrams, it does appear that, you know, we would be able to, with this project in particular, build farther away from the river with the B2-3 instead of B2-2 zoning. And ultimately, I do think it would be beneficial to the neighborhood to allow for mixed use and for allow for Missoula to build up in and up rather than out and urban sprawling. But I am skeptical of building so close to the river and, you know, our current regulations, I think, are not adequate to fully protecting the river. So I certainly think those should be updated into the future, but ultimately, I think, you know, with development happening at this part of the river, regardless, I think the better site plan seemed to be the one where the B2-3 zoning, where we can, you know, have a little bit more distance away from the river. And then also that would allow for, you know, commercial and mixed use where people can walk and bike in their neighborhood for amenities rather than having to drive farther away. So I guess I'm just making a call for updating like some of those regulations in the future. And also, I strongly believe that we need to allow for mixed use in all neighborhoods in Missoula and this is a step in the right direction for that.
Thank you for your comments, Counselor Carlino. Counselor Campbell?
Thank you, Mayor Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am mayor. So I have some concerns with this proposal in terms of impacts with floodplain, impacts with the irrigation canal on the south side development. But be that as it may, today for the hearing now, we're talking about the zone change for the property. At the end of the day, it is consistent with the land use plan. And I suspect I will set some of a precedent for what you would expect for zoning coming forward. Have the new zoning plan coming up for review in the next matter of weeks. So I think, now I echo some of Counselor Carlino's concerns in terms of regulatory processing. But from my vantage point, I think we need to trust in those processes for any development that be proposed under the zoning that's applied for here. And in terms of floodplain mitigation and traffic mitigation, that the systems are going to work the way that, you know, they should work. And depending on the type of development that takes place, if those issues have been mitigated. So for the hearing now, with the rezoning of itself, I'll be in support.
Thank you for your comments. Are there any other council comments this evening? Okay. Not seeing any then. We'll go ahead and call for a roll call vote. Ms. Trimble, when you're ready.
Right, voting on item 5.2, the rezone of California Street and River Road, beginning with Campbell.
Yes.
Carlino?
Yes.
Farmer?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Nugent?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Basika?
Yes.
And Basara?
Yes.
And that passes with 11 in favor, none opposed.
Okay. Thank you very much, and thank you for staff and for the presentation and members of the public. We're moving on to the next agenda item, also related to this area. So I imagine many of you are here for this as well. And this is item 5.3, which is annexation of 400 North California Street. And again, we have Tara Porcari here that is here to provide the staff report and presentation.
Awesome. Okay. Thanks, Mayor. Round two for me tonight. Again, Tara Porcari for the record. This one is an annexation petition for the property just across the street from the previous rezone. It's located at 400 North California Street. And they are requesting the same zoning upon annexation as the previous rezone of B2-3 Community Business. I-Meg, again, is the representative for the owners on this one, who are Rick Zavarelli and Grant Shermer. So as a reminder, unlike rezoning projects, City Council may impose conditions of approval with the annexation. So we'll have a few of those recommended. Like I said, property is across the street from the previous rezone request and just southeast of the intersection of North California Street and River Road, directly adjacent to the southern end of the California Street pedestrian bridge and right next to Silver Park. I'm gonna do my best not to repeat too much from the previous presentation. So just note that nearby transportation options are all similar for this project. Additionally, one of the recommendations for conditions of approval from Public Works Mobility is for half-street improvements to be completed by the developer along the adjacent portion of North California Street. The site itself is just over 35,000 square feet, and it's also located within City Council Ward Three and Riverfront Neighborhood Council area. Currently contains a single-family residence with some outbuildings, all of which are proposed to be removed with the tentative development plan. It's located within the utility services area. And while sewer is already available in North California Street, a recommended condition of approval has been added to extend a water main from Idaho Street up to the north end of the property in North California Street to serve the property. Floodplain is the same designation for this property, so it's also located within Flood Zone AE, where the 1% chance annual flood hazard area. Again, they'll require the review and approval of a floodplain permit prior to issuance of any building permits. Okay, on to the annexation criteria itself. The property is located within our high-priority Annexation Area A on our Annexation Policy map, which is categorized as an area that generally meets all of our criteria that we want to see in order to annex a property. The project in particular also supports many of the goals included in the city housing policy, given its walkable location near trails, parks, existing transit options, and economic centers. And then it's also kind of an obvious candidate for annexation, given that it's been the only small county island there, kind of in the middle of the city in this area for a while. So it definitely contributes to the logical growth pattern of the city and fills an important gap in city limits. We'll kind of gloss over this piece, since the information on the land use plan in place type designation is the same as the previous rezone. It's also designated as Urban Mixed Use Low, so the current relatable zoning districts do include B2. The applicant is also requesting zoning of B2-3 as a zoning upon annexation, so it would align with what's laid out in the land use plan. Then here's just a quick call out that this property is also located in Wyoming Street neighborhood. So the same emphasis on diverse housing options, mixed-use development, and connections to the river and green space buffers apply. The current zoning is NR Neighborhood Residential under the county. So here's a comparison of some of the main standards. With that of the proposed B2-3 district in the city they're requesting, you'll see that we're going up quite a bit with respect to allowed density, going from a maximum of eight units per acre to 43 units per acre, which of course would be limited by the design and, you know, some other Title 20 requirements. Things like parking and landscaping are normally kind of the big ones. The setbacks are slightly different and are dependent on a budding residential district for the proposed zoning, rather having kind of some universal ones for the existing county zoning. Obviously, we're going to see some changes going from the county to the city, one way or another. The heights, surprisingly, aren't actually too different, since the county NR allows up to 60 feet currently or four stories, while the B2-3 allows for just five feet more at 65 feet. Then the allowed uses are also very similar, even though the names kind of don't necessarily suggest that, with the majority of the uses not highlighted on the screen, both being allowed under both the existing and the proposed zoning. And then we also see drinking establishments going from by right under the existing zoning to taverns and nightclubs being a conditional use in the proposed zoning. Finally, the proposed zoning also allows artisan manufacturing, which is a very low-intensity industrial use. This is what the applicant has submitted as a general idea of a development proposal. They can speak more if they wish to on the details, but their application outlines that the added height of B2-3 would again help them move what may be a mixed-use building away from the river and hopefully add some more green space buffer. Agency and public comment was generally received jointly for this project alongside the previous rezone. So we don't have anything additional to what was presented on the last project. That being said, there were obviously some recommended conditions from Public Works Mobility for the annexation piece, but not any annexation-specific concerns communicated to staff thus far. So here are the two recommendation, sorry, recommended conditions of approval. I think I mentioned both of these just kind of earlier throughout the presentation, just a water main extension of North California Street and half-street improvements on North California consisting of a driveline, parking lane, urban gutter, boulevard, and sidewalk. There is a memo attached to the packets, because we've updated the timeframe from originally one year, and this has been quite a while ago now, to two years, either for the developer to complete the full installation or secure an improvements agreement with Public Works Mobility. This was all based on a discussion requested by the applicant. We chatted with engineering. Nothing big there. We just wanted to make sure it was a little bit more reasonable for timing for everyone. So that's got a thumbs up from our engineering staff. Based on compliance with the annexation policy and guidance from our land use plan, again, for that zoning upon annexation, our recommendation is for the approval of the request. That's all I have. Representatives are the same, so they're around. And I'll pass it back over for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Porcari. Are there members from the developers' representatives that wish to add to the presentation?
Hey, it's Joe again. Joe Denard, I-Meg, representing the landowner, DEH-NERT. Tara did a phenomenal job, and I won't take up anyone else's time here for questions, along with the rest of the team. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Denard. Then this brings us to questions from council. Any questions from council on this annexation request? Not seeing any. I'm not seeing any online. Then we will go ahead and hear the main motion. And Counselor Nugent?
Thank you, Mayor Davis. I move City Council adopt a resolution to annex, incorporate within the boundaries of the city of Missoula, the parcel of land addressed as 400 North California Street, legally described and shown in Exhibits A and B, and zone the property B2-3 Community Business, subject to the conditions of annexation based on the findings of fact in the staff report.
All right. Thank you very much, Counselor Nugent. That motion is on the floor. This opens up the public hearing and offer the opportunity for the public to make comment on this agenda item. Anybody wishing to make public comment on this agenda item this evening? Come on up. Mr. Stevens, could you start over for us?
Yeah, good evening. My name is Jeff Stevens. I live at 123 Saranac Drive here in Missoula. And I would like to speak in favor of this proposed annexation. Then for the purposes of supporting the redevelopment of this area, I think it'd be a real asset for the community. And I've long been involved in graffiti and tagging control on the California Street Bridge. And I believe that redevelopment of this area would aid instrumentally in helping with that problem. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Stevens. Other members of the public wishing to make comment on this agenda item? I'm not seeing any in the audience. How about online? Anybody online wishing to make public comment? All right, I'm not seeing any hands raised. Okay. Thank you very much. That wraps up our public hearing, and we'll go ahead and bring it back to council for any additional questions or comments this evening. Not seeing any? Okay. Not seeing any questions or comment from council. We'll go ahead and do a roll call vote. Ms. Trimble?
Right, voting on item 5.3, the annexation of 400 North California Street, beginning with Carlino?
Yes.
Farmer?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Nugent?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Basika?
Yes.
Basara?
Yes.
And Campbell?
Yes.
And that passes with 11 in favor, none opposed.
Okay, thank you very much. Thanks to everybody. Appreciate the thorough staff presentation as well as additional presentations from the development, developers' representatives. And thank you for members of the public for coming down and taking part in the public hearings this evening. That does wrap up our public hearings, and we'll go ahead and we'll move on to our next item of business, which is the consent agenda. So...
Thank you all. Have a lovely evening.
Absolutely, we will. Thank you very much, Mr. Denard. All right. Ms. Trimble, you'll share the consent agenda on screen. And go ahead and read the items aloud when you're ready.
All right, on this evening's consent agenda, we have accounts payable to ratify accounts payable for checks dated April 1st, 2025 in the amount of $997,145.86. We have a second motion for accounts payable to approve accounts payable or claims for checks dated April 8th, 2025 in the amount of $979,288.67. We have a motion to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the professional services agreement with I-Meg for the Woodford Water Main Replacement Project at a cost not to exceed $92,340. We have a motion to approve and authorize the mayor to sign a resolution revising the city's policy for review and approval of requests for municipal utility services to property outside the corporate limits. We have a motion to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the contract amendment to the professional services agreement with DJNA for tasks related to preliminary engineering services for the Downtown Safety Access Mobility Professional Services Agreement at a cost not to exceed $249,950. We have a motion to adopt a resolution of intention to annex and incorporate within the boundaries of the city of Missoula, Track 1 of Certificate of Survey Number 5023, located in Section 18 Township 13 North, Range 19 West, Missoula County, Missoula, Montana, PMM, as shown on Exhibit A, and zone the property B2-1 Community Business, subject to the conditions of annexation of approval based on the findings of fact in the staff report, and set a public hearing for April 21st, 2025. That is related to 2100 Flynn Lane. And we have a second motion related to the amended and restated development agreement for Flynn Lane to set a public hearing for April 21st, 2025 to adopt a motion to approve the proposed amended and restated development agreement between H-E-H LLC, Mullen Land Holding LLC, Missoula Mary Jane II LLC, the Snow Farm Project Property Owner LLC, and the City of Missoula to accept a cash-in-lieu payment of $178,500 to the City of Missoula's Affordable Housing Trust Fund, subject to one condition of approval based on the findings of fact in the staff report.
Excellent. Thank you very much. All right. The consent agenda has been read. Do we have any public comment on the consent agenda this evening? Not seeing any in the room? How about online? Okay. No public comment online either. Do any council members have a request to separate any item or announce intent to abstain? Counselor Basara?
There's an item regarding downtown SAM, a contract with DJNA, and I'm employed by DJNA. I abstained from voting during committees. I just wanted to put that out on the record. I intend to vote for the consent agenda, but just wanted to make sure that it's on the record that I did not vote for that during committees.
Thank you for your clarification. Appreciate that. Counselor Nelson?
Yeah, I just want to echo what Counselor Basara said. Did not vote for that item in committee, but because I am employed by DJNA, I just want to make sure that there's no optics of any kind of conflict here. So yeah, just want to make that known.
Thank you, Counselor Nelson. All right. That is on record. Any other council separation or extensions? Okay, then we can do a voice vote on the consent. extensions? Okay, then we can do a voice vote on the consent agenda, Ms. Trimble.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? All right, that passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you very much. We don't have any business under our regular council business this evening, so we'll move right to our state legislature update. We have Jessica Miller here to provide that staff report. Ms. Miller?
Good evening, everybody. Jessica Miller, Central Services. Today is day sixty-eight of the ninety-day session, so we are three quarters of the way through. The official schedule still lists May fifth as the last day of the session. However, they can always decide to adjourn early as they sometimes do. Last Monday, we had another deadline. We've previously talked about some deadlines for general bills and the like. Last Monday was the last day to introduce appropriations and revenue bills. Usually the bills that are are coming in at that time are pretty limited in number. This time in the week leading up to that deadline, there were about a hundred and twenty bills introduced, not including their various resolutions. So it was a busy week. It's been a busy couple of weeks. There are additional deadlines coming up over the next couple of weeks as things start to trickle through, so transmitting the those appropriation bills from one chamber to the other, various deadlines coming up to amend bills back and forth between chambers. So things are starting to go pretty quickly now. We have, let's see, so one of the the big bills, there were a lot of those bills that were introduced at the at the last minute there that were just immediately tabled in committee due to not really having enough time for the legislators to really examine them. One that is going through right now is Senate Bill five thirty-nine revising property taxes and special assessments, which could be very problematic for us on on the way that they define things and even some of our S I Ps could be difficult to do in the future. That bill has passed the Senate already and has a hearing in the House tomorrow. House Bill twenty, which is the one that requires voted levies to be in dollars rather than mils, has been transmitted to Governor Gianforte and so that is on his desk awaiting a signature. House Bill one fifty-four would have established a housing fairness tax credit. That one was tabled. Senate Bill four twenty, limiting local government fees for children's use of parks, had a hearing in the House last week and so we are awaiting executive action in committee on that one. We're not sure if we'll be able to defeat that one or not at this point. House Bill one fifty-five, I believe, is still active at the moment. That requires class four residential and commercial property taxes and that's one that we're supporting for as part of the property tax reforms. House Bill four eighty-nine would have revised sales tax laws to provide for local option tax. That one was tabled again this year. We've had similar proposals in previous sessions as well. Senate Bill ninety, redistributing certain state tax revenue to primary residence property tax relief. That would have taken some of the existing lodging taxes and distributed them to local governments for property tax relief. And that bill had made it all the way through the Senate and then was tabled in a House committee. I did hear this afternoon, it's not updated in the state system yet, but our lobbyist informed us that House Bill two twenty-one that would have required local elections to be held in even numbered years. That one was tabled this afternoon in committee. So that one would have created a lot of challenges for us here at the city. And let's see, so that's the major bill updates. One thing that we'll be seeing here in these last few weeks of the session is as they start to combine bills back and forth, you know, there will be a lot of bills that are similar subjects and so they may have a lot of amendments in them to coordinate. If Bill A passes, then Bill B also does this. We'll see things where they take most of the language. If there's two fairly similar bills, they'll take most of the language from both of those bills and put them in one and table the other. So there will be a lot of bill amendments coming through. At this point, the only new bills that can be submitted are studies, study resolutions, but there there will be a lot of amendments going through all the bills that are still in the system. And that's my report and I'm available for any questions.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Miller. Any questions or comments from council members? Okay, yes, Counselor Jones?
Yeah, on SB four twenty, the one regarding children's fees in parks, Strikers is our Missoula soccer, our private club. I know the director and spoke with her a few days ago and they are not in support of this because they understand how much it costs to run the parks and to have competition level fields. So I just think that's interesting to bring up when the private club is not in support of it because they understand the intricacies of how all of this works financially to make it work. We should be taking note of that. And also, these clubs do have extensive scholarships for kids who can't afford it otherwise. So that's that's not the issue. So I'm hoping that four twenty is defeated.
And on that note, Parks and Recreation Director Donna Gockler did go to Helena last week to testify on that bill. And she and her staff have compiled a lot of really great information that we were able to get to the committee to explain where our fees come from and and frankly, where the the club teams come from as well. Only a very small portion of of their fees actually go to paying paying for city fields. So she's done, she and her staff have done a great job with that.
Counselor Cheryl?
I just want to highlight one of the things that you one of the bills, and I didn't catch the number, but around the local option sales tax, I know that we have, a lot of us have talked about that up here. And a lot of us campaigned, talked about it when we were campaigning and that option has not been allowed by our legislature. Just, you know, we've we've talked about that for for years and we keep trying and keeps not not happening, so.
Thank you for your comments. Are there additional council questions or comments? All right. Not seeing any. On that note, there are a couple of different bills that do address property tax reform, so we will continue to advocate for those and bring updates to this council. Ms. Miller, thank you very much for being here in your presentation and your work on this. Thank you. Okay, that wraps up our state legislature update. I just want to mention again for council and members of the public that there is on our main website, our main homepage, on the city of Missoula's homepage, a link that you can see the bills that we're tracking and the status of those bills. Okay, now we'll open it up to public comment on non-agenda items. Again, we keep our public comment to three minutes. I'll help you track that up here. Whoever's ready to provide public comment, come on up.
Mayor Davis, council members, thank you for all you've done. I um I wanted to come in and touch base because the town is helping a lot of people transition with tools and we just started our big, your big push to help a lot of people get into different housing options or find different solutions and the timeline is tight, but it's something that can be done. So you know, when I was in high school, I went through some big stuff and it knocked me over really hard and the structure underneath Missoula's services saved my life. I have become the person that I am and I have accomplished the things that I have accomplished because Missoula has a good set of services underneath of it that keeps people moving forward. I'm not going to give you three minutes. So what I do want to say is there are a lot of people moving forward right now and there are a lot of tools. And Baby Steps is good. So a good thing to take advantage of right now with Baby Steps is the community project, Community Connect, and I don't know if you're going to sum up what's going on with that, but that's Friday from ten to three. So anyone that has no idea where they want to go, that is a great place to start because Missoula and the leaders within Missoula are set to help people move forward. And sometimes structure seems a little scary, especially COVID actually took away some of our structure for a while, so we're going to be helping people understand how big of a deal it is, but I wouldn't have the life that I have today without Missoula's structure, so I'm so glad we're covering that as we walk forward in this. So I just want to remind everyone to let everyone know Project Community Connect is from ten to three this Friday and it is a good thing to kind of hype up redesigning your life after you get hit all the way down to the ground and into a hole. Because at the end of the day, I can say that Missoula has the ability to walk anyone forward through anything and help them accomplish what they will accomplish in their life if they are willing to follow the structure that people know works. And that's all I have. Thank you so much for holding space for everyone, Mayor Davis. It has been a real pleasure watching you do all of this and interact with you out and about. So thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Ms. Entanas. It's a pleasure to have you here. Thank you for your comments. And thank you for mentioning Project Community Connect this Friday. That will take place at the Missoula Public Library. All right, any other members of the public wishing to make comment this evening?
Big K, Montana. Let's have an update how I disrespected you last week as somebody wants to think I disrespected you on that nice delicious story of the state troopers of Utah when they had the housing, the homeless department under quarantine by the directive of the governor and the legislature. I forgot to mention one thing. As the individual upstairs was telling me, I was such as such, I spoke last week, the individuals that were securitizing the facility was advocating as Chomenites. The new word that I come across from an individual of the Russian Embassy when I went there and somebody gracefully called public safety. My friendly individual that's not a comrade that's a staff member of the Russian Embassy at eleven ten West Broadway took me outside to have a discussion as public safety showed up. Well, they didn't want to open the door for public safety for the interview of the specific comrade said such and such as the individuals March sixteenth that was not documented by the comrades of the Chinese consulate that's called, where they house all these inmates that the comrades embrace. And that's the staff members. And it's been going on for the last two years ever since the Johnson Center was there. Why wasn't I ticketed for trespass of the Russian or the China consulate for the fact of Chomenism? We embrace it. We embellish it. Now, it has the name of the Russian Embassy, which is the Pau Relo. The China consulate, which is the Johnson Center. Will it have Missoula's name to the word Chomenism as Chomenites? And if you have any questions, just contact your legislators. One of them are not happy. Two of them is really not happy. And I want to hear from the rest of them.
Thank you, Big K. Other members of the public wishing to make comment this evening on items not on the agenda? Okay, I'm not seeing anybody in the audience. How about online? Anybody online wishing to make public comment? Okay. Not seeing any online either. So that does wrap up our public comment on items not on the agenda this evening. Thank you very much, everyone. Appreciate you coming down and sharing your comments. We'll next move on to communications from the mayor and I will just briefly acknowledge and and recognize the substantive public protest that was that took place on Saturday downtown Missoula and it's estimated to be around three thousand people gathered downtown on the courthouse lawn and steps. I want to recognize that there was no violence, not that I'm aware of, not that it's been reported. And not that I saw. And so I appreciate very much people being able to show up and share concerns, their opinions, their their passion and doing so in a peaceful manner. Missoula really continues to impress in so many ways. And so thank you. Just to all of those that that do show up to to share their concerns, I appreciate you doing so in a nonviolent manner. Thank you. And with that, I'll turn it over to council for comments and I'll start here in the room with Counselor Savage.
I'll pass. Thank you.
Okay, you bet. Counselor Nugent?
Thanks, Mayor Davis. Quickly, I appreciate your comments and there's clearly something happening with some of those protests around the country. So that was, it's always interesting as a student of political science to pay attention to those things. I want to comment for a couple of minutes just on the broader I guess layoffs and riffings and whatever else we want to call it that the federal government's doing right now. There were headlines last week that the Rocky Mountain Laboratory in Hamilton is going to lose a significant number of positions and there's federal funding tied to that. I might have got the name slightly wrong, but there are a lot of people from Missoula who drive down and work in Hamilton, both at the laboratory that's tied to the federal government and then there's private business around that. So we are feeling again the impacts of these kind of at whim decisions. I also have shared the story with some of you, but I I know someone who works for the Department of Health in DC and she described to me what the day was like last Tuesday when everybody showed up for work and there were basically lines to get into the building significantly long because the security was enhanced because they were concerned about people being upset when they got through security and scanned their badge and basically determined if they could go into the building or if they didn't have a job anymore. And I just think that wherever people stand on what is going on right now, this is not the way to treat humans who have families, who have, you know, responsibilities, who have expenses and to just think, oh, you know, we need to cut all these things so you you could just leave today and that's it. You know, life is not that simple, but the United States is supposed to be better than this. And I think there are so many things going on right now that we can apply that to, but I just wanted to point that out that these things are impacting people we know. They're impacting people locally. And it's only going to get worse. And at some point, the the delegation of people who are elected to represent Montana at the federal level have to start responding to this because we are their constituency. The people who are losing their jobs are their constituency. And Montana is not going to be the same. So that's all I have tonight.
Thank you for your comments. Counselor Nugent, Counselor Cheryl?
Yeah, I appreciate those comments, Mike. In addition, I I find it hard to believe that that some of these these firings and cuts aren't affecting every person in the country. I mean, the Social Security administration, they're making it harder for elderly and disabled to go in in person and having a ninety-three-year-old father that that does get a social security check, I, he doesn't live here, but you know, he doesn't know how to get onto the internet and figure things out that way. He's not going to do any of his forms online. I mean, it's just such a, it's such a disservice to people in our country. That's, I I won't go into, I'm going to be a positive. And just say that I I really appreciate everyone going out for the protest on Saturday and a girlfriend of mine and I came down and rode the bus and the bus was just packed with people. So it was a nice community coming down and being together and it was peaceful and respectful and and I just appreciate all the the speakers coming out and everyone coming out for for something they care about and for their their community.
Thank you, Counselor Cheryl. Counselor Farmer?
Thanks, Mayor Davis. I'll pass.
Okay, Counselor Nelson?
Yeah, just a quick note about the upcoming budget reconciliation and the idea to sell America's public lands to pay for our national debt. I think it's an incredibly short-sighted idea, but I will
I think it's an incredibly short-sighted idea, but I will give one example of maybe where that concept could provide valuable for us here in Missoula. And there's a parcel of land the Forest Service owns in the middle of town at Catlin and 14th. It's the motor pool for Region 1. That is the kind of land that I think we would be willing to talk about transferring federal ownership to municipal ownership and developing potentially low-income, affordable housing units. But creating a radius around Western communities of 10 miles and saying that all federal lands within that radius should be sold for development is just a haphazard way of going about doing it. So yet another example of when a chainsaw, when a scalpel should be used instead of a chainsaw. So open to having a conversation around the Catlin parcel, but let's make sure that the remaining public lands surrounding Missoula stay exactly as they are.
Indeed. Thank you, Counselor Nelson. Counselor Carlino.
And I'll pass.
Okay. Counselor Jones? Okay. Counselor Campbell?
Yes, thank you, ma'am mayor. I just want to bring the folks' attention, a recent news story, an incident that occurred back on April 2nd. I believe it was KGBO that broke this on their website and social media, but there was an individual that was recently arrested for burglary. His initials are KC. Want to see his name? It's in the article. Probably should say that, as you see on TV shows, all subjects are presumed innocent until proven guilty in court of law, such is the case here. But on April 2nd, the police department received multiple calls on this individual, not too far from downtown here, in fact. And this individual ended up being arrested for entering into business, going behind business where public is not welcome, helping himself to property, indeed helping himself to personal property and jewelry of a particular individual in this business. Earlier that day, he had attempted to gain access to an occupied motor vehicle. And this is an individual that, on the day this occurred, was intoxicated. And turns out, looking at our previous record of this individual, intoxication seems to be a common denominator, and it is an ongoing community problem, drug and alcohol abuse, certainly. But here we have an instance where this individual has had nine cases here in the City of Missoula since February, since mid-February of this year, and four of those cases remain open in municipal court. Yet here we are today, and we still have a situation where this person is, you know, allegedly, throw that in there, menacing the public in ways that are unacceptable, endanger public health, endanger public safety. And, you know, it took, I guess, what one of my colleagues would call an upcharging, you know, to burglary to finally get to a position where this person can be held to account. And, you know, perhaps this individual will, you know, take services available to mitigate behavior, mitigate alcohol consumption, alcohol monitoring, alcohol compliances, things that, you know, at present do not exist within our municipal court system, which is a segue into a slightly different conversation. That is, it was brought to my attention very recently of a case that is currently being prosecuted by the county attorney's office on behalf of the city as a misdemeanor. So I don't know, we'll call this upcharging or sidecharging or sideswipe charging or lateral charging, but, you know, we have a situation where this person's actually being prosecuted by the county attorney's office in justice court because it was determined that individual's previous history, we had a situation where no pretrial supervision exists in municipal court system, no post-trial alcohol monitoring available within our local court system. And more importantly, we have a situation where our municipal court sometimes does not even impose mandatory minimum standards on offenders when they're found guilty for a particular committed crime. So it's in light of those circumstances where now we're at the position where, you know, we have the county involving themselves in misdemeanor cases here within the City of Missoula. And, you know, I just, you know, would like to see us going through this year, you know, we have election season coming up. We have three judges that, you know, ran under the slogan of, you know, justice forward or justice forward for Missoula. And, you know, I'd like to know where the forward is. I'd like to know where accountability is. I'd like to know where public safety is. I'd like to know where regard for safety of the citizens of this community is on behalf of our elected judges. And I think Missoulians, they look at this case, they look at the story, they look at other cases that have come from municipal court in recent years. You know, they need to make an evaluation. I don't know what the race is going to hold. You know, I would encourage, you know, if people know attorneys in town here, they have the requisite experience, if they want to run for office, you know, I would encourage them to do so. But, you know, I think it ultimately up to citizens to decide for themselves, you know, if we need to go in a new direction, a direction that, you know, supports, you know, accountability from the people that administer justice and creating a system where folks like this individual KC on April 2nd doesn't feel emboldened, go out and commit further crimes because there's no accountability from our elected municipal court judges. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Campbell. Counselor Becerra.
I will pass.
Okay. All right, you bet. Any members of council that are online wish to make comment this evening? Counselor Asika.
Thank you. I just wanted to quickly say that there's a lot of, I guess, different opinions and different controversial stuff that's going on nationwide and locally. And I just wanted to briefly say that with everything that's going on, I think it's important to not share untrue stuff. So basically, what I do during a typical morning is I look at all different news sources. I look at K-PACs, NBC Montana, Nonstop Local, Missoula Current, the Missoulian, Montana Right Now, the Montana Free Press, News Talk KGBO. I look at local blogs of people that I disagree with or that I do agree with. And then if there's something that's going on with them, like a bill that's going on in the legislature, I read the actual bill. And because I just want to make sure that I don't accidentally comment on something that was untrue. So I would just encourage folks to do something similar, look at all different news sources, even if, no matter what side of the aisle you're on, there, it is a spectrum. You know, you can agree with some people that you usually agree with, or you can disagree with people that you usually agree with. And I highly encourage that because that's what America's all about. I just want to make sure that when we're having discussions that we're actually all talking about what is actually happening. And I know that not everybody has time to look at all the news sources that I do. I mean, it's my job, so that's why I do it. And now that I have a two-month-old, I'm up a lot in the middle of the night, so I have a lot of free time in the middle of the night to browse the news. So I just wanted to encourage folks to look at news sources that you usually don't look at, look at blogs you usually don't look at. I would encourage folks to just get the full spectrum and line of thinking and formulate own opinions. With that, I am done. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Asika. Yes, diversifying our news sources, news is a good idea. And Counselor Jordan? So your hand is raised.
Thank you, Mayor. I think that, gosh, I think this is just a general response to Mr. Campbell's comment. I think it's also really important to look at overall crime statistics and just general safety numbers. I think that taking certain cases and focusing on them perhaps doesn't show the whole picture of the general trend of crime in our community. I think it's really important to look at arrests all the way to disposition. And there are certainly people who are trickling through the criminal justice system and perhaps are not getting the accountability and support that they need. But I just want to caution on highlighting specific cases and saying this is an example of how things are working generally, because we need to look at a lot of other factors as well before we decide that people aren't doing their jobs and that the criminal justice system as a whole is, it's like, you have to look at the whole thing rather than isolated incidences. And I think that once we get metrics on our programs, we'll really be able to put the proof in the pudding. But I would also urge you, Mr. Campbell, to reach out to the municipal court judges and talk to them about their data. And instead of highlighting a particular case, I think that the criminal justice system doesn't necessarily work for people who need supportive services. It works really well for me. I never want to get in trouble for anything, but for people who are addicted and/or have mental health issues and/or quote-unquote victims of poverty, the criminal justice system just doesn't handle those cases very well. So please, as Ms. Asika just mentioned, do your own research and check a bunch of different sources, and let's not cherry pick data to create confirmation bias. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Thank you, Counselor Jordan, for your comments. And I do believe that wraps up our council comments this evening. And with that, I'll go ahead and adjourn our meeting this evening at 8:01 PM. Thanks for joining us tonight.